Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We will go ahead and call to order our meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. It is August 21st, 2024. We do have a quorum present this afternoon. We did not have anybody register for public comments, so our first item of business will be to approve the minutes of the August 7th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. We had a chance to review those prior to the meeting. Did anybody have any additions or corrections?
If there are none, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jacob.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Okay, and then the consent agenda, which again has quite a few items on there, which means the staff has been working really hard to get those things taken care of and all set before they come to Planning Commission. So if anybody on the Planning Commission had any of those items they would like removed for any further discussion, and if not, we'll be ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jacob.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
All right, old business. We do have one item there today. This is North Church Street Townhomes. Site plan for eight single-family residential attached dwelling units, or townhomes, within two buildings on 0.8 acres, zoned RM12 and CCO, located along the east side of North Church Street. Sherri Farad is the developer. Ms. Smith, how are you this afternoon?
Very well, thank you. Chair Jones, commissioners, this particular site, you see on the screen above you as highlighted in yellow. You had seen this particular project back on July 17th, where we reviewed the site layout, parking, landscaping requirements, drainage, all of those things, but there was one outstanding item that Planning Commission thought needed some work. So staff has worked diligently with the architect of record on the project site, who is here this afternoon that can also go over specifics on the project, but really worked diligently to hopefully bring you back a project that you think is much more in tune with the adjacent architecture. I did, for your reference, attach the prior staff report so that I didn't regurgitate some of those items, but really, you may recall, the prior building was a kind of a red brick building with stone base on it and had a little bit more of a mountain type of viewpoint from the front porch area. But what they did here is first and foremost, change that color palette. You wanted to have a softer color palette. They added shutter features to all of the adjacent windows, and I'm going to zoom into one building so it's easier for you to see those detail features. They modified the exposed rafter porches and the top of the building. They closed in the front porches, kind of in this upper section above what used to be the doorways. They added columns to the front instead of those open exposed wood features. They moved the entry doors to these outer edges and incorporated windows towards the center. The entire porch was actually extended, changed the roof to a standing seam metal roof for a little bit more detail and formality. As I mentioned before, they no longer have that stone along the base of the building, but they took the brick to the entire first floor level and added details and encasement for the downspouts through there. They also added column lights on the front faces of the columns, so again, that's more to the pedestrian scale. They've added these brick coin features, and then they elongated all of the windows. And really, I think a bigger feature was this front section was a much larger roof that took up about 70% of that top portion. They put it in a smaller scale, and staff believes that these changes may reflect some, if not more, features that the Planning Commission had concerns with, and we're hoping for your input back as to whether this is an acceptable design in our downtown, as this is about two blocks away from our Judicial Center. And with that, the architects here for any questions that you may have on the project or anything that I may have missed as well.
I'm Sam Anderson with Anderson Architects, and we'd like to thank Holly for her direction on this. You know, there's an infinite number of residential styles out there, and we needed a little bit of direction from the city to try to figure out what we're trying to do on this particular project. There's one thing that I noticed on here that could be looked at, and that's the metal roof over the porch. We're currently showing it as kind of a hip roof with two different slopes. We could modify that. It could be a shed roof with a metal on there, or, you know, make the two side slopes equal. Right now, one's a little bit steeper pitch than the other, so that's something that kind of escaped my notice when the draftsman was making changes to it, but that's about, you know, we've got it, the front doors got separated a little bit further apart from each other, which is great, and it does have some odd constraints. The parking had to all be kind of pushed to the side. A lot of times you'll see townhomes with mirrored plans, the units are mirrored on one side to the other. This is not the case. It's kind of an odd set of constraints that kind of created the floor plan, but I like the elevation that we've come up with now. I think it's restrained and stately, but we're willing to do whatever we can to push it across the goal line.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. What questions or comments from the Planning Commission have we seen the changes we were looking for on this in regards to design and?
I think it looks a lot better.
It's a huge improvement. Yes, I do.
Are the shutters and the doors, is that like a gray or is that a green, or what color is that?
I was going to say, there is a, attached in your packet, a breakdown of the material types that we anticipate in here. Excuse me.
Yeah, the materials are, you know, up for your approval. Initially, we had shown some materials, and sometimes, for the sake of clarity, using a lot of the architecture now is black, gray, and white. It just doesn't sometimes read real well in the elevation, so you use some of these muted colors, sage green, or, you know, some of these things, they sometimes don't pop, but the colors could all, is that something that would go through the?
Well, we would usually look at this, and if there was any direction that Planning Commission would like to.
Mr. Wright, on that, on that material sheet, it calls out the color of the shutters as saber gray.
One of the?
Oh, Mr. Carroll.
Mr. Carroll, yes. Okay. Or Mr. Wright, whoever would like to listen to that comment.
I think you're needed to know that.
I heard the voice coming from that general direction.
Yeah.
Which kind of looks like a green tone, type of a hue to it.
Any specific questions or comments, direction? We really appreciate y'all working with us on this, and Ms. Smith, thank you for all your help working on this project.
I make a motion when approved, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
A motion and a second, Ms. Jacob.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And that is subject to all staff comments, which there's very few now.
Subject to all staff comments, yes, thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
That was said. There, I heard it.
Next, we have our GDO section of our agenda. Our first item there is Robert Rose Village West. It's the Vintage Exchange Apartments. Final design review and site plan review for a 318,500 square foot mixed-use development in four main buildings, zone PUD and GDO1, located along Robert Rose Drive and Maple Grove Drive. TDK Land LLC is the developer. Mr. Barbie, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones and members of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have two items for you today on our GDO portion of our agenda. The first is Robert Rose Village East Vintage Exchange Apartments. This is located off of Medical Center Parkway between Maple Grove Drive and Robert Rose Drive. They will have access points to both Maple Grove, Robert Rose, as well as Medical Center Parkway through the adjacent shared driveways. The proposed development is for approximately 318,500 square feet of mixed-use space. It'll be a combination of residential, office, and retail within four proposed buildings on the campus. Scroll down to the site plan. As you can see, as we discussed, it does have access to all three of the frontage streets surrounding the parcel, is just south of the current, like currently under construction, Trader Joe's. Staff has reviewed the plan. It's generally in good condition. We would ask that any approval be made, subject to all staff comments.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? We are looking at final design review and site plan review.
If there are no questions, I move for approval, subject to all staff comments. Second.
A motion and a second, Ms. Jacob.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have Item B is the Fountains at Gateway, Phase 2A. Final design review and site plan review for 193,040 square foot mixed-use building on 5.12 acres, zone PUD and GDO3, located along Medical Center Parkway. Hearthstone Properties LLC is the developer. Again, Mr. Barbie.
Good afternoon again. This is the Fountains of Gateway, Phase 2A, also located just off of Medical Center Parkway, just adjacent to the Fountains, Phase 1. This proposal is for 300, 193,040 square feet of also mixed-use development space. Again, it's going to be a combination of residential, office, and retail space within one building. Parcel's a little bit over five acres, and will have access points when fully developed to Williams Drive as well as Medical Center Parkway. The site, and again, this is the final design review. You previously reviewed this plan for architecture back on July 17th of 2024, and I believe it was in good order at that point for architecture. Staff has reviewed the site plans that were submitted. Generally, it's in good order. We do have one remaining comment that's in process, is that the final plat for this area must be recorded prior to the issuance of permits. The surveyor is working diligently to get that area defined, and they are going to be shifting one of the property lines so that it better fits within the overall development of the site. Plan is generally in good order. Staff would request that any approval is made, subject to staff comments.
Any questions or comments on this final design review and site plan review at the Fountains?
If there are none, I make a motion when approved, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jacob.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Two very exciting projects out in our gateway. Love it. All right, next, we're moving on to Plats and Plans. That's four items here. We have the Town Creek Daylighting Site Plan for Stormwater Maintenance Project and Public Recreational Area on 6.45 acres, zoned CH and CCO, located along Northwest Broad Street and North, no, excuse me, South Church Street. City of Murfreesboro is the developer. Ms. Smith.
Hello again. You may recall, this has been an exciting project for the city. It has involved multiple city players. I'm just the staffer for planning, but a lot of heavy lifting has been done by Gabriel Moore, engineer in our planning department, along with, of course, Greg McKnight and Sam Huddleston, Reagan Smith, who has representation here today, as well as Griggs Maloney, and some fantastic team effort. But for some of you who may not have been on Planning Commission long, some of it was reflected in our Historic Bottoms Plan, which I've included in your staff report. That shows really that creek project and the daylighting of Town Creek to be on the south side of Northwest Broad Street. At one point in time, it was not anticipated all the way to Vine Street, but the current project is already anticipated all the way up to Vine Street, and as you can see on the right-hand side, would connect the Greenway from the Cannonsburg area along that frontage of Broad, back over the opposite side of Church Street, onto Northeast Broad, and to the backside of the Discovery Center. So it will really combine and connect our two Greenway sections. In this particular corridor plan, you may know that most of the buildings have been demolished. I think another one is getting demolished this week, and before the end of the year, they're anticipating having bid documents out based on the grant funding that they've received for the project. This gives you kind of an overall view of that street infrastructure, which includes a portion of Hickerson Drive, which is a separate item on this afternoon's agenda, as well as the frontages along South Front Street, along Castle Street, Church Street. When we look at the overall plan setup and you zoom into each various component, we are including some additional new parking required on, not required, but on Hickerson Drive to provide some, I'll go back to this one, on Hickerson Drive, that will provide some onsite parking for the project itself. They've updated, I call it the nice colorful map. You'll see that parking area here along Hickerson Drive, that's being provided with 17 additional parking spaces plus two handicaps. Of course, there will also be the existing Cannonsburg Trailhead that provides additional parking to get onto the Greenway and utilize the facility. And then over by the McDonald's area, we're looking at providing about seven additional spaces on their site because of some of the changes and impacts there, and another seven on the backside and one ADA at the backside of the Wetland Connection on that site. As you can see, most of the project site to date does look at daylighting of the creek, set back a little bit from the corner of Church Street, and that's to accommodate for the separate project for the pedestrian bridge, making room for that as a separate project, but this can, is a standalone project with its own timeframe. But the white area that you see here, all the way around the facility, is a 54-inch fence with multiple access points that in the future, the operating hours for when those will be open or closed would be determined, but really, for those more what I call active space areas. But then you'll see outside of that fence line, a pathway here, and there's actually two of them, one for bikes and one for pets, that comes through the site so that during any time of the day, those will be accessible to persons that are traveling along Broad, and the project does involve the removal of all of the sidewalk that's directly adjacent to Broad Street. And the idea again is to, once the bridge is built, have them traverse the street from there, and then you do recall, in the cross-section, on the other side of the street, we have the Keystone Project, which will maintain a sidewalk per our Main Street Revitalization Plan, whereas the creek side will really pull that sidewalk further away from the travel lanes and provide an active space for folks to enjoy. Here, you can see a little bit better cross-section where the travel lane is and where that fence sits back. It's anywhere between, you know, 12 to 20 feet, and then where the creek dives in a little bit more will adjust before you hit that fence line. So again, you're discouraging walking on that side of the street directly adjacent to the travel lanes, and in the future, there may be other city projects that affect some of those travel lanes, so we're wanting to make sure that there's plenty of room for those features as they go. Additionally, on the site, you'll see features like these retaining walls. Some of those retaining walls, they have fall drops that are extremely severe. They'll have some shorter three-rail fencing as well included in that project, and then they have some activities that actually try to bring people down to the creek level to enjoy those. And again, here's that pedestrian path and bike trail that we were showing adjacent to Hickerson, with the decorative street lighting being added to those features so that pedestrians and bicyclists do have adequate lighting for the project site. When you're looking at the entirety of the site, you may recall some of the McDonald's site was done a long time ago, but part of the project will again allow that daylighting to also occur on the opposite side of the street, directly adjacent to the McDonald's site. There are a couple of bridges that are anticipated, just pedestrian size and scale bridges within the project site activity area, that will allow pedestrians to get across the street. There's also some various green space areas that allow larger congregations of activities to occur, so you can see a little bit better here. And then there will be maintaining Hickerson Drive vehicular access to one parcel here, the very first parcel that's on the corner, as well as the second parcel in, and all the remaining vehicular access would be converted into really this pedestrian and bike access along the way. Again, when you're looking at these areas, they're not hardscapes, no hardscape buildings are included in this particular portion of the project, so it's really to get the spline so that all those activity centers over time have the ability to modify. City also purchased this particular site here due to some of those access issues that is also incorporated into the site plan for the project. And then here, you can see a little bit more of that detailing of how the sidewalk will tie in with a pedestrian bridge that gets you back over to the backside of the Discovery Center and extends until it hits the existing Greenway system there. Other things that have been included, you see within the attachments, there's various sections of pavers, as well as some focal point areas. There is landscape. City is still working through a lot of those landscape issues so that it can have a good mix between beauty and not heavy maintenance over time. And here, you can see again that corner of Church Street, which there's a temporary connection back at this point until the bridge project is actually put in place, and then Castle Street will have some other connection points that come into that southerly side to get people onto that path. And again, some of these features that they include are some things called scrambles, which are natural-looking ways to get down to the creek, as well as some features that could allow for a future, what you see at Cannonsburg, parking of mobile food vending for events and those sort of things over time. But with that, we wanted to give you a good overview, and then this last one, which I would say is a good idea of how everything ties together, shows where the pedestrians will be able to traverse on the backside of the site, where we're going to get those connections back to the other Greenways here along the northerly and the southerly portions of the site, and then where some of those sidewalks are going away in various sections, including along Church Street. So again, trying to get the pedestrian further off these very heavy traffic ways and providing a much improved area for walking, and as I mentioned, landscaping, they're looking at really enhancements that will continue to improve that activity, but provide the basis for the initial project. With that, there are any questions? Gabriel Moore is here, as well as Reagan Smith, who helped prepare all of the documents and continued to shepherd the entire project, and I know I'm proud of your city team.
Lot of work, been going on for a long time. Looks fabulous. Questions anybody have, or anybody else you need to hear from for any clarification on anything?
Do y'all foresee, I mean, I'm just asking, it would be any sort of pedestrian walkway on Church between the two, you know, like the side that McDonald's is on versus where all this is getting opened up, or, I know it's a huge, busy intersection, and you probably wouldn't encourage it, but it's like they're two different islands almost.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. Gabriel Moore with the Planning Department. That is something that is foreseen, Mr. Halliburton. As a matter of fact, in the, in the, this is the first time I've worked this new machine, so bear with me here. In the concept plan that Holly presented in the package, and, sorry, my trigger finger's too quick. You will see.
I see.
Now, this, this piece here, Mr. Halliburton, you're speaking of, is there's no, there's no immediate plans for that, but it is certainly something that's being worked on as opportunity avails itself in the, in the future. And, you know, the Ped Bridge, I believe that Holly mentioned the bridge over Broad Street there is being shown in this rendering as well, but that is a separate project that is being, is undergoing, I'm not sure what phase it is in now, but it's, it's underway.
Okay. I just thought that would make sense, so that, that answers my question. Thank you.
Yeah, and I was going to say, the only other independent project that I did not mention is that the city, through the Keystone Project, of course, they're working on some plans to realign the Vine-Front Street, so the kind of the nose section of this, you notice this section out here is where the current street is, so this plan reflects once we pull in that street, but that is a separate project with its own separate timing, as well as widening around the Church and Broad Street intersection that they're also doing with that project that they're responsible for as part of the Keystone Project.
And the references, for example, that Cannonsburg Trailhead, and then on the other side of South Church, the, the reference to the Discovery Center connection, that's a future.
No, those are included in this project.
That would be, okay.
So here, where you see kind of the hand panning, this section, they will actually be taking the rest of the trail to where it ends currently.
Okay.
And then on the other side, on Cannonsburg, as they were looking at it, the culvert that's going to go underneath this street structure will be put in such a place that they can accommodate a sidewalk to come up the opposite side of the street, and then have a full 10-foot multi-use path, because a portion of that path is really narrow at the beginning of the trailhead, so this will be, basically allow that multi-use path all the way through one end to the other to connect.
All right. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Excited?
I'm very excited about this and the Keystone Project, and I don't know whose idea this was in the beginning, but it's a great idea, so I'll make a motion when approved, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion.
Are you going to take credit for this?
I cannot. But like Ms. Smith said, I mean, this, this was part of the brainstorming of the Historic Bottoms Planning Study from back in 2015, 2016, so I think, you know, we, I think that definitely one of the good ideas that came from that, that timeframe and that, and that process.
Sorry.
Oh, I love it. Love it.
I can take credit if you'd like me to.
He can. He kind of headed up the Historic Bottoms study, so there you go. All right, so I do believe that we have a motion for Mr. Halliburton and a second for Mr. Prince. Ms. Jacob?
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Thank you all again. So exciting. Okay, next item on Plats and Plans is Hearthwood Lot 5. Site plan for 800. Site plan for 18,000-square-foot commercial center in two buildings on 4.3 acres, zoned CH, located along Chandler Place and South Rutherford Boulevard. Garang Patel is the developer. Ms. Smith?
Well, thank you again, Chair Jones, Commission. As you can see on the drawing on the above overhead, staff has kind of outlined the subject area because it doesn't necessarily follow the existing parcel lines as one, you approved a master plan amendment a while ago, as well as a preliminary plat and a final plat for this particular area. And so the Hearthwood Development, this particular one involves what we anticipate is called Lot 5 and a portion of Lot 4, and would actually provide access, two points onto Rutherford. One, that would be a full access point, and then one further into the interior that would be a right-in, right-out. And then one access point off of Chandler Place. This particular project, staff has been working with for a while. They're looking at two individual buildings. A sewer variance was approved by City Council back February 8th of 2024. As you can see on the master plan, here's all of those parcels and how we anticipate them. Lot 2 is currently developed with a convenience store and gas station. Lots 3 and 4 were slightly modifying the boundary lines. And then as you look into the master plan, it was really worked hard to get these accesses along the frontage road that will ultimately allow it to be tied back into those other projects to the north. So this actually, north is oriented to the left of the screen. And then on the backside, there is a private drive that will allow future access back up to Haven Drive. As the city was working on this particular project, they are not having that connection point with this particular project, but would anticipate it with any other future development of lots 3 or 4. As part of the site layout with the project, what they are looking at is having some internal connectivity for pedestrians, as there's not anticipated to be any pedestrian sidewalks along the frontage of South Rutherford Boulevard. However, there is existing sidewalk that does go along Chandler Place currently. And for those of you who may recall, Chandler Place at some point will get back to Farmhouse Downs, further to the east of this project. But this particular project, what you currently see on Chandler Place will remain in place, and then really the access points will be added. Those two 9,000-square-foot buildings, the reason that they needed the sewer variance is there are anticipated two drive-throughs, one on each end of each building, and then a restaurant use in this particular corner of the project. So with those, they did need an additional sewer variance in order to keep those all in place. Now, looking at the landscape plan, this shows you a little bit better what that Lot 5 looks like. So this odd-shaped triangular area is actually zoned RM12, but it will be used for the access and private drainage easement to serve lots 5, 4, and 3 of the project site, and will require that perimeter planting that we would normally see on all project sites. And then, as well as interior landscaping as well. We do have three formal open space areas that are incorporated into the plan that really better serve those restaurant-type uses here, adjacent to that corner drive-through, adjacent to that next drive-through, and then a fully covered but open area on the far building. So those areas basically incorporate some pavers, hardscape, tree scape, tree wells, trash cans, very easy up front, and then a separation between traffic areas and those outside open space areas. As to the architecture, the architecture really for Buildings 1 and 2 are almost identical, just flipped the opposite way, with this particular end unit having that open outside seating area retained in place. Each of the tenant spaces have, burgundy awning is proposed over them. These aluminum canopy awnings are really only along the backside of the building over those really employee entrance areas. They are incorporating brick and stone, as well as wood siding into it, that are all cementious materials and really have a very neutral color palette. And here, you can see the rendering that goes down that particular street. And the opposite one, again, looks very identical. The anticipation is all the HVAC equipment, you can see here on some of the drawings, would be not as tall as the parapets and be screened by those parapets. But as in most cases, we do include that condition in your staff report. So with that, we think that this particular project is in pretty good order, and they are providing, let's see, 108 regular parking spaces, and this particular project only requires 80. So they have about 28 extra parking spaces that, over the city standard. And with that, I think, yes, the applicant and their engineer are present in case you have any questions on the project.
And did you feel like all the drive-through lanes, there's all the stacking, the required amount?
Yes, so they do have, thank you for pointing that out. So each of the drive-through lanes actually have the minimum 10 stacking, and we did make sure in this segment that we only had one exiting point. Prior versions actually showed two-way traffic that was a little confusing. And then they also do provide an area here, where my hand is, for one unloading zone and another one in this area that's clear of all that through traffic, so that they also have adequate onsite unloading and loading outside, doesn't affect the internal circulation as well.
Okay.
Lot of moving parts on this one.
Okay, any questions, comments on this site plan?
It's our honor, and I'll make a motion, we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jacob?
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Our next item is City Tile Site Plan for a 7,000-square-foot warehouse addition at an existing flooring store on 1.01 acres, zoned CBD and CCO, located at 223 South Spring Street. Andrew Young, developer. Ms. Smith?
Well, we're excited, another downtown area project. This one is seeing some expansion at an existing tile store. Most of you may have had some business dealings with, I think they've been in business over 50 years. So in the downtown, we do have the Main Street Revitalization Plan, which is denoted by these colors, pretty colors, green, blue, blue and green. So you'll notice here in the top right-hand corner, it says the blues are Section 3's, while the greens are Section 2's. And I just handed out, just for your reference purposes, what those are and where they are in downtown, because they do affect the streetscape. In this particular area, there is one additional lot that the City Tile folks have purchased that has a single-family dwelling on the backside, has a lot of open space. And for those of you who travel down Severe Street, because their site has been there for so long, is very constrained. So staff met with the owner out in the field and their engineer, and what they wanted to do, that really had some benefits to the city, but we do know that it has multiple constraints that we were able to work through to really provide a project that has a lot of benefits to both the applicant and the city. So those of you who may not be familiar with that particular corner, here's the City Tile site with their main entry point along this street, Severe along the south side, with several roll-up doors that face to the street that they take a lot of their product intake and outtake out of. And then they have a dumpster enclosure to the edge, and then you get to that new lot. And so what they're looking at doing here is really adding, and this one kind of denotes it on that other side, here showing those existing areas of roll-up doors, they are looking at having one new roll-up door added to the edge of the existing one, basically right in back of where their trash enclosure is. Because they're moving the trash to the opposite side, they need to have a way to get some of their product in. And then on the opposite side, the second one is actually facing Academy. Additionally, what they do plan on doing is having a screening wall in a area that it's a backing-up truck dock area, so it'll actually slope down so that they can easily take product in and out. And what this really does for the city is it provides areas where they're not blocking half the street, which occurs on a regular basis. So we're really excited that this project is moving forward. And in trying not to have people throw trash into those dumpster areas, we really wanted to try to not have sidewalks directly adjacent to that screening wall. That screening wall's at 20 feet back from the right-of-way, which meets the downtown policy of maximum setbacks. And this front facade here is made to look like a storefront. It actually does have one pedestrian door that looks, again, like a main shop front, but it is anticipated that that will all be part of the warehouse space. But with the 7,000-square-foot addition added to their existing square footage, the office and showroom will still be about 54% of the square footage floor area of the building, and only the 46 for the other components. And when we're looking at that particular site layout, there we go. Landscape page. So they are located in the CBD district, so you may recall CBD does not require any parking. However, they do have 11 parking spaces at their existing site. The new site anticipates adding another six parking spaces. Again, this is a lot of the traffic that they may see in the morning of people coming in and leaving with product. And then another two parking spaces along South Academy. Kitty corner to this project is the Greenhouse Ministries Project. They have this very same streetscape, which includes decorative lighting standards, as well as trees. And then there's a good amount of green space in front of the building. And then that new sidewalk that they'll be putting on the site will actually wrap the corner and start coming down Severe Street. So these are sidewalks that we currently don't have in place in those sections. And again, some additional street lighting being added to there to meet those downtown Main Street standards. When we're looking at, again, the layout of the plan, and I'm just looking to see, did I miss it? Maybe I didn't. Now, I guess the elevations on the building, looks like this was the only one I did not upload, I'm so sorry for not uploading the elevations for the building. The building itself, and it's only shown in this small clip, has a stone base, so the current building is all CMU painted block. So it's a gray block wall with no base body and cap. So this particular project, what it proposes is it's stone on the bottom, like water table, with about a 15-foot wrap around the corners. And then it has that same gray CMU block wall is what they're proposing to match with the existing building portion. And because we're adding landscaping in front of this screen wall, staff did not feel that needed to be that same stone base, because you're not going to be seeing it with all the landscaping in front of it. So that's what they're proposing as the front facade for the project. And so staff did look at it for, we believe that the site layout, the streetscape, all of that really meets the intent of all of our infill site projects, but we wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with the building elements kind of speaking to the pre-existing building, which doesn't necessarily meet a brand-new standard that has nothing that it's trying to speak to adjacent to it. And the applicant is here in the audience, I think. Just you.
Just Mr. Tuff. Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments regarding this?
I got a comment. Not to get too deep in the woods, but Doug Young could see this.
I was going to say, don't make me cry now, too.
Yeah, and know that they're staying downtown and building a building like this, he would be very proud of his son, and I'm all for it.
Me too.
Is that a motion?
It is a motion, subject, I approve, motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jacob?
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Doug was a very special part of this planning question, and I served with him from 1998 till he passed away in 2016. And Mr. Halliburton did too, and I know he served many years towards the end of that term on the City Council as well. So we're thrilled to see his business continue and everything they're doing for that. Like Ken said, that he'd be thrilled.
So our next item, Item D, is North Walnut Street Office. Site plan for a 2,700-square-foot office building on 0.15 acres, zoned CH and CCO, located along North Walnut Street. MC2 Properties LLC is the developer. Ms. Smith?
So a third downtown project, I am so excited. But you'll notice as we get with some of these small sites, especially as we start to develop them with office or retail or commercial uses, they are very small lots. This particular one is only 42 feet wide by 156 feet deep, so staff got very creative in that this adjacent property to the south is zoned highway commercial, but it is residential, which do have some constraints like 10-foot setbacks and such. But what staff did want to do and included in the staff conditions was because the new access into this site is not a full 22 feet, like you would see in a standard commercial, we wanted to make sure that there was a shared access easement provided here, so in the future, as this adjacent property developed, it would have the ability to have a wider shared access point on the particular site. The site is all zoned CH around all of the sides. It also is in the downtown Main Street Revitalization Section 2 type of standard, and you'll see most of that standard to the south, where there's a sidewalk that's behind the parking area, that's the public sidewalk, and then it's basically flush with the street and the drives to be able to get into the site. So it does anticipate meeting that particular standard. Now, I did hand out to you a revised front elevation for the project site, as this one, because of that parking standard, made it difficult to get the building closer to the setback lines of the maximum setback. So the new proposal that has kind of that louvered, I'll say low fencing area would be at that 20-foot setback line, which we think meets the intent of setback, especially when you have parking directly in front of that, for the architecture and the design of the building. Here, you can kind of see a side-by-side, that front facade that exists to the north adjacent to this. This particular building would sit about a foot off of the property line with no openings. Also, the building to the north has no openings on that particular side. And this is the prior iteration where it showed that awning up at the second floor level, staff suggested that maybe that this be lowered to actually provide some protection for the doorway entry. And this is where that low wall has been added for kind of bringing the building a little bit more to the front. This particular project, again, staff recommends that the staff approve it, subject to the staff comments. Most of the staff comments are very light. Some of them have now been addressed, and we're just wanting to make sure that there is a base body and a cap, which we're assuming might be done through color, not that we're the color police, but we just want to make sure it meets that particular standard. But we think that the product really looks good as far as trying to combine or look like the adjacent building. like the adjacent building. And so it does include a lot of the same components as the adjacent building does for the site. Now, parking is a little interesting here. This particular one has only about seven parking spaces in the back, but then it also has two in the front. One's a handicap space, one is a regular space. And in our downtown, in our CCO, there is a standard that talks about if there is striped parking in front of a business, that they can have a 50% reduction in parking. So if this property was not in the CCO, it would normally require nine parking spaces. And lo and behold, between what they have out front and the ADA and the back, they happen to have nine. But the policy is such that they would only require five parking spaces onsite. And this particular building is anticipated to be an office use with a first and second floor, which could be independently by two different businesses. One business, they're not sure, they don't have those specifics yet as far as who would tenant the building. But again, it does meet the parking standards in the CCO. But this is probably the type of project you would see more frequently in our downtown district. And this particular area, even though it's zoned CH, it is considered part of our future downtown footprint as the city continues to grow and expand. So with that, the applicant's engineers here for any questions that you may have regarding the property, but we believe it should be approved subject to all staff comments.
I do like the revision. Think it looks really good job.
With the revision page.
Revision, yes, thank you. What other comments and questions?
If there are no questions, I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Jako. Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. That concludes our plots and plans, and we are moving on to new business where we have four items on the agenda, and two of those have been withdrawn. So we will be looking at two items, A and C. Item A is the mandatory referral to consider closing a portion of Hickerson Drive for vehicular use. City of Murfreesboro is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
I promise this is my last item.
All right. You're on a roll. Let's go.
We're on a roll. We're excited. So here you can see on the screen on top of here is the portion of Hickerson Drive we touched upon briefly during the Town Creek Daylighting Project. So the portion that's directly adjacent to Front Street would maintain regular right-of-way and vehicular access. And in this one, it's a little bit different. We're looking at just changing the Hickerson Drive to be closed to vehicular access. So it's not abandoning the right-of-way and consolidating it with something else as legal kind of dove into this particular site. It's still going to be used for access, it's just not for vehicle access. It will change to bike and ped. So we're anticipating we would keep the right-of-way, but only close to vehicular access this remaining portion of Hickerson. As I shared earlier, the city does own one piece that was going to be maybe problematic if they needed access. So the city did purchase that site. All of the ones that are on this northerly side of Hickerson have been all purchased by the city with the demolition and the creek project. And the ones that are remaining in place to the south, these two closest to Front will maintain their access off of the open portion. And this bottom section down off of Castle will maintain its access off of Castle Drive. So staff is looking at setting a public hearing for this as we have reached out to all the utility companies. And we'll bring you a more further report during our public hearing, which we're asking that you set for the September 4th.
September 4th, yes, ma'am.
Meeting date.
Okay, September 4th. So we're not adjusting during the week of Labor Day.
No, our adopted calendar has our regular meeting on September the 4th.
Just confirming. Okay, any questions before we set a public hearing?
I move to set the public hearing on September 4th.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Jako. Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Thank you so much for your patience and awesome work.
Thank you, Ms. Jako. Appreciate everything. Great, great day. Our next item, like we said, we are, Item B has been withdrawn. So Item C is the zoning application for approximately 6.1 acres located along Willow Oak Trail and Robert Rose Drive to be rezoned from PUD, the Clary Park PUD and GDO-1 to CH and GDO-1. Heinz Clary Park Land Holdings LLC is the applicant. Mr. Barbie, right?
I'm gonna fill in for Mr. Barbie.
Okay.
He had to step out.
Okay.
But he has been the one who's done the work on this application. So I know all of you know how successful the commercial aspect of Clary Park has been over the last several years. They're taking down their out parcels along Medical Center Parkway very quickly. And the Heinz team, along with SCC, came to us and said that they really needed more commercial land out there. This was an area that was going to be developed with, oh, and I've got it pulled up, if the cable department could put it on my computer. Thank you. Thanks anyway, Holly. So Heinz and SCC identified the need for additional commercial land in Clary Park. They saw that the demand was still really great for additional commercial development in that area. And so this area in blue, which is a little over six acres, that had been approved as a part of the PUD for residential development, they are now requesting to have it rezoned to, from PUD, the Clary Park PUD, to CH. And the commercial development in Clary Park is zoned CH and GDO-1. So they're wanting to replicate the CH and GDO-1 zoning that is the zoning that is for the rest of their commercial development. I don't know specifically what type of uses that they, that they're getting inquiries about in this location. Of course, the Gateway Design Overlay District placed on this property will place restrictions on a number of uses that would be allowed in commercial highway outside of the Gateway Design Overlay District. And I believe that Mr. Taylor had communicated to Mr. Barbie that Heinz will be recording a supplemental declaration to the CCNRs for the commercial to add this property to the commercials. Is that correct, Mr. Taylor? So all of the restrictions that were placed upon the commercial along Medical Center Parkway will also then apply to this property as well. So we're requesting that you, well, before we request that you schedule a public hearing, I do want to note that this is in the area on the future land use map identified as employment generating. Employment generating has, recommends, employment generating uses, you know, offices, office parks, business parks, advanced manufacturing uses as the primary use. And then commercial, retail and residential are allowed as secondary uses. So basically what they're proposing to do is rezone the property to allow for one of the uses that's been identified as a secondary use, kind of exchanging one secondary use, which is already zoned for residential, for another secondary use in the employment generating land use character, which is more the commercial retail. I think it's more likely that even though the CH zone would permit a number of uses that would be classified as employment generating uses like office parks and the like, that this is more likely to develop with the pattern that has been established in Clary Park, more retail and restaurant uses. With that being said, we are requesting that you schedule a public hearing for this matter for the September 4th Planning Commission Agenda. And Mr. Matt Taylor is here representing Heinz. If you have any questions for him.
I've got a question. I know it's been a long time ago, since four years ago. We had one part of the residential set aside that if we could bring a Class A office space, that it would be Class A, and then we had to wait so long, and then it would revert to residential. Is that this section?
No, that is not this section. Mr. Taylor, I believe that is the section that's lot 18.
It is. So if, you can go back to the podium. Yeah, so that right there is where the apartments are being built, right there. You see the red X. And then kind of down off the screen was that area, councilman. And so, you know, actually, we were gonna bring a site plan on that for townhouses this month, but next month you'll actually see a PUD amendment for that portion of Clary Park for, that deals with architecture on the townhomes for that portion. And as far as uses on this segment, my client has already started talking to another hotel user. We envisioned probably three users back here. One thing my client has committed to the city is no more drive-through restaurants on this portion. And I think some of the proximity to the residential might limit that ability as well, but...
Was this X amount of townhomes, or was this a single-family detached section?
I believe there was a mix. I think what was along Willow Oak was detached, and then behind that was townhomes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't remember the exact number total.
I understand.
I think Mr. Barbie included that in his staff report. I think it identified 48 townhomes and 17 single-family detached dwelling units. So it would have been 65 dwelling units on this six acres. Mr. Taylor, does that sound about right?
Any other questions before we schedule a public hearing?
Move for approval to schedule a public hearing on September 4th.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Jako. Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
All right. And as we said, Item D has been withdrawn. So we are moving on to staff reports and other business where we do have one item that we know of. It is a mandatory referral to consider the purchase of property located along Butler Drive and the future Kenny Pipe Court. City of Murfreesboro Administration Department is the applicant. Can I get this, Mr. Blomley?
Yes, ma'am. I'll take this one. So this comes from the City Administration Department. There are two additional parcels. There are the parcels identified in blue and red on the map before you. The city has identified this six some-odd acres as additional land that could benefit the future transfer station, public works development, to have that additional acreage. The property in orange is the area that we have, that you've reviewed a site plan for the transfer station and the future public works facility. And so this would increase the acreage of that property to about 27, 28 acres. And so administration has requested your approval, or your recommendation of approval for the city to begin the acquisition process for those two parcels. I believe Mr. Huddleston has it on the council agenda for tomorrow night for council consideration as well.
Any other questions or concerns regarding the acquisition of this property?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Jako. Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Blomley, do we have any other staff reports or other business today?
Madam Chair, just a reminder that our next appointment will be, or our next meeting will be the Wednesday of Labor Day week on September the 4th. We've got those two public hearings that we just scheduled and a few other items of business as well. And then want to also just remind you, as we are getting into the, well into the second half of the calendar year, we do need to make sure that everybody is getting their four required training hours. And I will continue to look for opportunities for you. Sent a couple your way over the last month or so. I believe one that has been recorded, and I sent you a link for it. And they've got, Tapas, another one that is this Friday around 11:00 or 12:00, I think, that I sent out. And I'm hopeful that there will be a recorded version of that as well. So I know sometimes it's difficult to make those webinars live when you've got a bunch of other things going on as well. So I'll continue to keep you posted on opportunities.
Okay, thank you. Any other business?
Did you send that out for the one this Friday?
I believe I did.
I saw it, I saw it.
Yeah. But I'd be happy to resend that.
All right. If there's no other business, we stand adjourned. Thank you.